I'd like to call to order the November 15th meeting of the Planning Commission. Mary, would you lead us in a pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monet?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Parker is absent.
Yes, she is.
Vice Chair Koberstein?
Here.
Chair Kissner?
Next item on the agenda is the public forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on the agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussion nor take action on any matters not described on this agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. Do we have any public comment?
Good evening. My name is Vicki Bradshaw, and I'm a resident of St. Helena. I appreciate that the city is implementing a new website, but I also know that technical issues often occur when this is happening, but I also believe there is a problem when there's a lack of access to both the notice of public meetings, including both the agenda and the staff reports. The last Planning Commission meeting/agenda appearing on the city website was a month ago, on October 18, 2016. There is no notice on the website or any indication there is even a Planning Commission meeting this evening. In the past, many residents got their information about Planning Commission meetings from the city website. There is also no posting on the website where a resident or interested party could go to get the relevant documents. The documents are also not available when you search the Internet looking for this specific meeting, which could have been done prior to whatever's happening with the current website. This weekend, I checked the outside door of this building to see what was on the agenda for the Planning Commission meeting. The agenda was indeed posted, but a portion of the agenda was covered by a notice of the agenda for the Board of Trustees meeting, which took place last Thursday. So it appears the Planning Commission meeting notice was posted on the door after the Board of Trustees meeting. Because of this, we believe the Planning Commission should put off any public business scheduled for tonight, which would require formal notice to the public. We understand that the city may have satisfied the Brown Act requirements by posting the meeting on the door of this building, even though part of the agenda was covered. But this posting does not make available the relevant staff reports, which are often needed to understand exactly what decisions are being made during the meeting. We appreciate the need to upgrade the technology associated with the city's website, but that process may not excuse the city's obligation to make information available to the residents and interested parties prior to important decisions being made by the Planning Commission and by the city council for that matter. Thank you.
I haven't had a chance to confer with the city clerk or the planning director about this. I assume that the noticings were properly posted. What was described by the speaker does reflect that the Brown Act was satisfied, so it's my view that, short of hearing something further factually, that this meeting may proceed as planned.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, the notices were available on the website. The city website has a new location for those, and so Ms. Bradshaw may have been looking at the former location, but there is a new location for all agendas to be found, and I believe it's under a link called Current Agenda along the top of the homepage of the website, and that actually has all city council and Planning Commission meetings going back to October 2nd? First meeting in October. So it's just, we're happy to educate anyone or help anyone find any information that they're looking for on the website.
Excuse me for coming back up. If you go to the link where it's always been, where it says City Agenda, it takes you to where all the prior ones are. There's no link that explains, there's a different link, and I don't think you should expect the citizens, residents, whoever, is to hunt through the new website.
As I mentioned, it's labeled Current Agenda, and the city clerk notified or announces several times at the council meetings and former meetings. But as I mentioned, if anyone is having trouble finding information, just contact city staff, and we're happy to help them.
Thank you. We have no consent items tonight, so we'll go on to the public hearings. 5.1 is a request by Artown-St. Helena for tentative subdivision map, demolition permit, design review, and approval to demolish a single-family home and accessory structures in order to construct eight new affordable attached townhouses on the property located at 684 McCorkle Avenue in the high-density residential district. May I have a staffer?
Well, before you do that, I need to recuse myself from this item because I live, like, 30 feet from the property, and I will also need to be recused from the -- should I do that separately, or come back and do that? I need to be recused from the trencher item because I am also within the boundaries that make it against the Brown Act for me to be here, so.
Just to clarify, the recusal is under the Political Reform Act, not the Brown Act, but otherwise, it's fine.
Tom, can I go, or does she need to be out of the building? It's back in the control room. Thank you, Chair Kissner. Just a little background, the city purchased the property at 684 McCorkle Avenue for $700,000 in 2013 with funds from the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund and a loan from the city's general fund after having found it to be a potential site for future affordable housing or workforce housing. Subsequently, in 2015, the city agreed to sell the property for $1 to Artown-St. Helena for the purpose of developing affordable housing units on the site. In addition, the city council approved funding, the project's application and building fees for monies between $32,000 and $65,000, and to expend up to $100,000 for the construction of two very low-income units, that money also with the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. In order to achieve this project, the applicant proposes to demolish the existing single-family home and associated accessory structures on-site. The applicant then wishes to subdivide the property into nine individual lots in order to accommodate eight attached townhomes and one common area. The newly created parcels would range in size from 1,157 square feet to 1,262 square feet, with an average size of 1,187 square feet. An additional 11,901 square-foot parcel would be created for all common areas, which would be maintained through a homeowners' association. In addition to the demolition permit and property subdivision, the applicant requests design review approval for eight new homes that would be constructed in two new structures. Each attached townhome would consist of 1,633 square feet of floor area, with 593 square feet of living area, and a 244 square-foot garage on the first floor, and 796 square feet of living space on the second floor. In addition to the garage, the first floor will consist of the main living areas, including the kitchen, living room, dining room, and half-bath. The second floor will house the sleeping areas, including three bedrooms, a full bathroom, the laundry room. Total floor area for all eight units would be just over 13,000 square feet. Each of the four unit structures would have a building height of approximately 23 feet 9 inches. The exterior of the new buildings would be finished with a variety of materials, including horizontal lap siding, vertical siding, staggered siding, fiberglass-framed windows, and composition single roofing. The new homes would be constructed through a mutual self-help program. The Mutual Self-Help Housing Program is a USDA rural development program that helps low-income participants achieve homeownership through sweat equity. Participants work together with the construction supervisor to build their homes, and each family is required to work 35 hours per week. The property has a general plan and zoning designation of high-density residential. Multifamily dwelling units are permitted use in the HR District. However, new structures for both permitted and conditional uses do require design review. The project is not in conflict with any development standards in the HR District. That said, the typical city standards for frontage improvements consist of a curb followed by a planter strip and then a sidewalk. However, city standard number 315 provides two options for frontage improvements, one of which is a curb followed by a sidewalk and then a planter strip. The Public Works Department has conditioned the project to provide a sidewalk and planter strip, however, they haven't specified the order of each from the curb. For continuity with adjacent parcels, the applicant is asking for approval of the latter frontage requirement, which is the curb, sidewalk, and then planning strip. And the applicant can speak about this request in more detail when they speak. As far as the city's water neutrality policy is concerned, typically, the applicant would need to provide off-site retrofits in order to offset projected future water use. However, due to the fact that this is an affordable housing project and funding is limited, the applicant is asking to be exempted from the requirements of the city's water neutrality policy, as according to them, it would cost approximately $17,600 for the required off-site retrofits. And it should be noted that only the city council can waive the project's water neutrality requirement. A couple more issues to note. Approval of this project will satisfy the 2016 requirements of the Calderon Settlement. Artown-St. Helena has been in discussion with several neighbors about construction vehicles parking on private property at the end of the street. However, this has not been conditioned and is not a requirement, as this is a private issue between Artown-St. Helena and the neighbors, and the city can't prevent people from parking on a public street. It is worth noting that the southern elevation of the packet has been revised with a minor shift in the placement of the window. Artown-St. Helena did provide those, they are on the diaphragm and on the back table, and they can discuss that change when they speak. Again, it's a minor shift of a window, as I understand. With that, staff finds the project resulting from the proposed tentative subdivision map, demolition permit, and design review is consistent with both the general plan and zoning ordinance, will improve the condition of the project site, will provide needed housing within the city, and is in character with the high-density residential district. For these reasons, staff concludes that appropriate findings can be made, and recommends that the Planning Commission make a recommendation to the city council whether or not to grant the applicant's request for a water neutrality waiver, confirm the applicant's request for an alternative frontage improvement, and find that the project is exempt from the requirements of CEQA pursuant to Section 15332, which exempts projects characterized as infill development, and accept the required findings, and recommend approval of the tentative subdivision map, demolition permit, and design review for the proposed subdivision and new construction at 684 McCorkle. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is here, prepared with a presentation.
My name is Mary Stevenson, and I'm the board chair of Artown-St. Helena, the local nonprofit affordable housing organization, and I think we have a PowerPoint presentation coming up here in a minute. Tonight, we have six of our nine board members in the audience. Also, Howard Siegel, who is a project manager on this project. Erica Holthaus, who is our representative from the Rural Community Assistance Corporation, came down from Seattle for this meeting. And Tom Farady from Valley Architects, who designed this project, are all here and available to answer questions as needed. Do I have a thing, or are you doing the -- oh. So, Artown -- okay. Artown, as you know, has a two-pronged approach. We want to preserve existing housing through deed restriction and maintain existing rental properties in town, and we also feel -- want to build new houses, self-help homeownership, and also income-qualified rentals. The project you have before you tonight is a mutual self-help homeownership project, and this is a project where all the families build the houses together on each site. So the eight families will work together to do the foundation, to do the framing, to do the sheetrock, et cetera, on all the houses. Each of the participating families commits to 2,600 hours of labor, and keep in mind that these are all full-time employed people over the construction period, and that equals about 65% of the actual construction labor. So it's this sweat equity that makes the housing affordable to them for homeownership. Artown has received a grant from the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development for $550,000. It's a technical assistance grant to help us build 19 self-help homes in St. Helena. The first eight are on the site of McCorkle, which we're looking at tonight, and we're looking for land to build the other 11 homes. The funding for Brinkley Court consists -- besides the USDA loan, is the city has donated the land for the project, as well as fee waivers. We have a loan from the County of Napa, which will roll over into seconds on the homeowners once construction is complete. We have a pre-development loan from RCAC, which will be taken out by the actual mortgages from USDA. So the project is completely funded and ready to go. This gives you an idea of the site. The diagonal road running from the bottom to the middle of the right-hand side is McCorkle Avenue. You can see Mariposa winding around on the left-hand side. The large gray area at the top is the open space that's at the dead end of Granada Court, which is part of the St. Helena Villas-Mariposa condo complex, and that's where they have their big trash cans, and that's where we would want to have our emergency vehicle exit come out from, or two. There's eight townhouses and two buildings. The buildings are oriented to face to the east along the driveway that will go from McCorkle and dead end at the back fence, where there'll be an EVA excerpt that would only be used in case of emergency. Each of the units has a small backyard, and there's a community area at the back of the property and some landscaping in the front. All the units are three-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath with a one-car garage. On the right-hand side, you can see the first-floor plan with the garage, an entryway, there's a living room, a dining area, and a kitchen, and a half-bath on this floor. Upstairs, there's three bedrooms, a split bath, and a laundry room. This is an older sketch, but it gives you an idea of how the property -- how the buildings will be situated on the lot, with McCorkle being -- would be at the front. This is a newer drawing that shows what the buildings will look like from the front, and also, on the bottom, you see the new sketch on what it would look like from McCorkle. Artown made a mistake, and we did not include a revised elevation of the front of the building in our last packet that we sent to the city. So the ones that you have have a -- they're different only in the size and the placement of the windows. At the neighbors' request, we changed the placement of the windows so that the building would look more appealing from the street, look more like a housing structure than the side of a building. And so this is something that is new to the design, and it's our air for not including it in the beginning. We feel this project meets all the city requirements and goals. It's consistent with the general plan and zoning. It's an energy-efficient design. In fact, we have prepared all the roofs for solar. When these families have ownership, have a certificate occupancy, they can apply to have a -- through a grant program to get solar on their houses at no charge that will make them even more energy-efficient. There's 19 parking places, which is three more than is required by city code. We are providing affordable housing for local workers. We're asking for only two variances, a water neutrality variance and the Sunday work hours, which has been approved by the council already. We realize that this will have impact on the neighborhood during construction, and we've tried to develop a good neighbor policy with the people living on the street. We have an existing email list, which we'll be happy to add other neighbors to, and we plan on updating them regularly on the construction schedule, sending out alerts when there's going to be any loud construction, and we'll attempt to accommodate -- if somebody's having a party or something on the weekend in their home, we will attempt to accommodate them so that there won't be construction noise during their events. There will be a full-time professional project management team with a full-time person on-site whenever anything is happening, whether it be deliveries or construction. We will maintain a clean and safe project site, and we will not allow any loud music or unnecessary noise. So we will make this as non-impactful as possible during the construction period for the neighbors. We understand that there's concern about the vehicles during construction. Because this is a self-help project, we'll have the family members, and we also have community members who have volunteered. We have a list of, like, 22 community members who have already volunteered to work on this project. So there will be a lot of vehicles, not construction vehicles, not heavy equipment, just a lot of passenger vehicles that will be involved. We've made arrangements to park these vehicles on the vacant lot that's at the eastern end of McCorkle, Antonio Castellucci's lot, so that they will not be on the street, and we're working on agreement with another property owner whose property we would need to cross to put the cars onto the Castellucci property, and we've also contacted our insurance company to figure out if there's any liability. So this is a work in progress, and we want to make this work for the neighbors, and we need to get consensus on the best way to do that for them. This is the plan at the moment, but it could change depending on how everything works Because this is an unusual project and something that this city has not looked at for over 25 years, I thought it would be good to give you just a little bit of information on the family owners, the people who will be building these houses. We had 48 applications when we introduced this project in May of 2015. We narrowed that down and did a lottery in July of this year and came up with the eight families who will move forward in this project, and includes the family of this little girl who's pointing to the apartment -- to the house that her family just chose in the lottery. There's an average of five family members per house. There's a total of 19 children under 18 living with -- among -- within the eight houses. It includes one special-needs child as well. The average household income is $51,000, which is about 62% of the area median income for Napa Valley. Three of the families have savings, which they'll put towards down payment, and will have at least two and possibly three very low-income families involved. All these families are currently living in rentals in the Upper Valley. Five of them are living in the affordable rental complexes like Stonebridge, et cetera, and we all know that the waiting list for these complexes is at least two years long. So opening up five units in these complexes and another three in the general Up Valley area will be a very positive effect on the -- on five -- eight more families in the Up Valley. There's 14 full-time workers represented in the eight families, all but one work at Valley. There are seven in the wine industry, two in hospitality, one in food service, two in elder care, one in social services, and one commutes down Valley to work at the Napa So for the families themselves, their journey has included -- so far, we've done two homeowner workshops talking about the financing of their property, their resale restrictions, their work agreements. We have three other workshops scheduled to talk about the actual construction process, what it means to own a home, how to do their budgeting, that sort of thing. The next step for them would be to finalize the sources and uses. It's a ladder that comes down from their maximum loan they can get from USDA, and then the savings that they have for down payments, the -- how we will distribute a subsidiary -- the subsidiary from the Napa County, and then supplements as needed for the very low income from the city of St. Helena, up to $100,000. Then we submit their mortgages to USDA. It's a different process in that the mortgages are granted at the time that the family owners purchase the land, and then the mortgage funds go into an escrow account, and they actually fund the construction of the property. So there's no takeout loan. There's one loan that comes at the time at the beginning of the process, and that carries them through, and that is their mortgage long-term. So it's very important for us to -- the timing of this, to make sure that the loans' closings are timed with the start of the building, so that they're not paying interest on a mortgage on a house that they don't have yet. Then our next steps are to finalize the construction budget and to get through the mounds and mounds and mounds of paper that we are doing right now, spreadsheets and CCNRs and HOAs and that sort of thing that we need to have for this -- for this type of development. We need to complete the negotiation with the St. Helena Villas HOA for the EVA and the drain adjustments, and then we need to hire staff. When we're entitled, we have the grant funds to hire three staff members, a full-time self-help project manager, a full-time site manager, and a part-time bookkeeper. So that staff we think we'll have onboard in January. So this is our timetable. We're expecting to do demo and site improvements in the first quarter of next year. The family owners will begin work, we hope, in the second quarter of next year, and the project will be complete by the third quarter of 2018. So the project will be three years from the time we got the property until the time it's completed. So that's our spiel. I do have one more slide here, just to give you a little idea. As I said, we have money to build 11 more townhouses, and this is a rough concept for the teen center lot. Railwood would be running vertically at the bottom of the page, and Folsom would be running from top to bottom on the left-hand side. This is a city-owned site. We could build 11 townhouses and a brand-new free teen center on this site and complete this -- and complete our total grant. So that's something to think about after we get through tonight. Thank you, and if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
I'm opening public comment. Is there any public comment?
Vicki Bradshaw, resident of St. Helena. While we're very supportive of the city's efforts to provide affordable housing and multifamily homes, we are opposed to the manner in which the city has handled these efforts because it has resulted in a segregated housing in St. Helena. As most of you know, we filed a claim with the city on behalf of a number of Eastside neighborhood groups. The claim asserts that the city is involved in ongoing housing discrimination and housing segregation and violation of both state and federal law. The claim was our third attempt to get the city to do what the general plan and the housing element requires, and that is to spread multifamily and affordable housing throughout the city. While we don't intend to suggest what you should do on this particular project, it would seem wise that the Planning Commission consult with legal counsel before taking action on this project or any project involving low-income, affordable, or multifamily housing proposed for the East Side. While we appreciate this project, and we do appreciate it, it would have been a perfect project for areas of the city closest to infrastructure and where there is no existing multifamily or affordable housing. And that is also true on the proposed teen center site. It's a perfect project to go in areas close to infrastructure where there is no current multifamily, low-income, or affordable housing. To further -- taking further action only provides additional evidence that the city intends to continue to engage in ongoing housing discrimination and could be viewed as compounding the city's potential financial liabilities related to such housing discrimination. In addition, we believe that any incentive the city offers to developers and/or sponsors, which involves the forgiveness of any infrastructure or accommodations, including such things as sidewalks, gutters, garbage, parking, safety provisions, et cetera, and including the waiving of the city's water neutrality ordinance, must be built and/or paid for by the city if it is not paid by the developer or the sponsor. By offering incentives that are not backfilled by the city, this only creates inferior neighborhoods with an inferior infrastructure, and that is exactly what we're getting on the East Side and specifically on McCorkle Avenue. These incentives are not currently paid for by the city, but are being paid for by the people living in these multifamily homes and by the people living in the surrounding neighborhoods who end up with nothing but an inferior infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Now close public comment?
Madam Chair, would you like me to comment or respond to the -- briefly to the assertion that there is a legal constraint?
I would like to.
So I can't comment, obviously, on a claim that's pending before --
Madam Chair, would you like me to comment or respond to the, briefly, to the assertion that there is a legal constraint?
I would like to.
So, I can't comment, obviously, on, um, a claim that's pending before, before the city, or on, obviously, we don't comment on litigation. I can tell you that nothing in the speaker's comments this evening, or in the claim, or in the accompanying letters, or the previous letters, suggests that you, as a planning commission, um, are constrained in any manner this evening in your decision-making about this project. And, in fact, um, it's counterintuitive, um, from my perspective, that the approval of an affordable housing project would somehow violate in and of itself, um, anti-discrimination laws, understated, um, state law and federal law. So, um, the short answer is, you are unconstrained. You may use your discretion to, um, to, uh, make your decision on the project before you this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Who would like to start?
I'll jump in. I don't have a lot to say, other than, um, I applaud Mary. It's always thorough information. You, you give us all the facts that we need, and we appreciate that. Um, I, um, I am excited about this project. I think it's, um, well-designed. I'm, will be happy to see. And, I think the, um, the ripple effect of opening up other rentals in the area is, uh, certainly going to be welcome news for a lot of people as well. Um, I feel good about the requirement or the, the request for variance on the way the frontage would look. I think it's actually a better design, and it would be, um, uh, fit in that area nicely. And, I'm supportive of recommending that we, um, we recommend to council, since we don't make the decision on water, but I believe that, um, in this case, it's consistent, especially with our housing element and all the goals that we have outlined. So, I think this is the perfect example of something that we should support a variance on.
Thank you. Commissioner Koberstein?
I agree. I'm, I'm not aware, in this case, of any infrastructure concessions, um, that have been made for this project. Maybe, I mean, I know we've been asked to recommend one or the other designs of the sidewalk, but...
Right. That's, that's the only, um, kind of input that Public Works is looking for, from the commission. We did, I think, in Aaron's presentation, maybe he mentioned that, um, we didn't condition one way or the other. I think s, my recommendation would be to build the frontage as it is on the other side of the street, which includes the planer strip and then the sidewalk, so the sidewalk is separated from the curb. But certainly, that's not, um, I don't have a strong feeling on it, and I was looking for some direction from the commission on it.
And, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought that was direction. It, it looked like, from the description, that that would be consistent with what's in the neighborhood.
And, that's, staff's recommendation was that there's a planer strip. The applicant has requested that the sidewalk be moved adjacent to the curb, and so that's the, that was the direction that Noah and I were looking, Plan Director Cowsh and I were looking for from, from the commission was.
So, you're saying functionally, it's, it's irrelevant, or it's, they're agnostic choices, really. Okay.
As, as looking at a circulation pattern and safety for the public works point of view, it's, and city engineer, I, I don't have a preference on one way or the other. The recommendation is the planer strip because it's consistent with what's across the street, and it's more in the lines of what, um, kind of newer development is doing. I think that, you know, those homes are built more recently than the homes adjacent to the project, which have the curb-adjacent sidewalk. So, um, they're, yeah, the, it, it's my recommendation that we put the planer strip in, um, but if the planning commission desires to, you know, follow the applicant's recommendation and put the sidewalk next to the curb, I'm not gonna, um, it, that would be acceptable as well.
And just, uh, staff would like to add that both are consistent with city engineering standards. So, from the staff perspective, neither one of them is a concession or create any substandard infrastructure.
Yeah. In looking at the property over the weekend, and then again today, I think it's fair to say that on the north side of the street, certainly, once you start from Allison, and you go over to Mariposa, and then you continue to this property, you have the configuration of the curb and the sidewalk. Um, when you get further down the street, where some of the single-family homes are, you have the other configuration. Um, so, personally, I don't have a problem continuing with what has already come nearly two blocks down the street. Um, on the water neutrality, I really think this is up to the council. It's not clear to me, from the ordinance, um, exactly how you waive this provision, or if it's got to be considered an appeal, um, by the applicant. But, I, I feel it's up to the council, and since it's, uh, an affordable project, uh, I would encourage them to find an acceptable solution. I do believe they have the option of putting the money in, uh, and then making it available to residents under a rebate program. Lastly, uh, you know, we've talked a lot about density on McCorkle, and I think it's important to point out in this case that this is at the lowest, uh, that you can be, um, within this zoning classification. And, I'm happy to see that. I'm happy to see that it's only a two-story, uh, structure, like many of the structures that are all along, uh, McCorkle. And, in fact, it's lower, uh, than a lot of them. Um, I think it's a good solution, uh, for this particular site, and, uh, I don't have any great reservations about it whatsoever. I do hope, and I have always believed, that traffic, uh, associated with construction and parking is something that the city should get into regulating. We post our streets that you can't park on them during certain holidays, or during fireworks, or whatever. So, I tend to think it's within our purview to say, here's how your construction parking is gonna work. But, if that's not the view of the city at this time, it's something I think we should work on. I'm confident they're gonna work it out, uh, with the neighbors. And, um, it is kind of a fact of life. We all face construction around us at one point or another, and I think there's a good faith effort here, uh, to do something that will be as least disruptive as possible to the neighborhood. That's it.
I agree with both my fellow commissioners. Um, I like the project. I think, uh, we've, I think the city's worked very hard to bring this to fruition, and, uh, I, I'm, uh, ready to accept a, um, motion, please. Page 12, Tracy.
Okay. I move that we find the project resulting from the proposed tentative subdivision map demolition permit and design review will improve the condition of the project site and proceed to approve. Um, we will provide, uh, it will also provide needed housing within the city and is in character with HR, with the HR High Density Residential District. For these reasons, um, we, the commission, uh, moves to find that the appropriate findings can be made and recommend, um, we make a recommendation to the city council, um, to grant the applicant's, uh, request for water neutrality waiver, uh, that we confirm the applicant's request for an alternative frontage improvement and find that the project is exempt, um, from requirements of SEQA pursuant to Section 15332, which exempts projects characterized as infill development and accept the required findings and recommend approval of the tentative subdivision map to the city council, and approve demolition permit and design review for the proposed subdivision and new construction at 684 McCorkle Avenue. And, to clarify, um, I think what I'm hearing my commissioner say, or fellow commissioners say, because we are, um, not opposed to either one of the frontages, that we really allow the applicant to make their recommendations to the city council, and we support whichever way they decide to go on that. Sorry, it was a little confusing how we read it.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Koberstein?
Yes.
Chair Kissner?
The next item is 5.2. It's a tentative map use and design review application requesting approval to subdivide an existing 2.5-acre parcel into five lots ranging in size from .17 acres to .77 acres, and to construct two new homes, each with a second dwelling unit, on two of the newly-created parcels located at 574 Pope Street in the medium-density residential zoning district. May I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Uh, as you mentioned, the item before you tonight is a request for, uh, tentative map use permit and design review approval, proposing to subdivide an existing two-and-a-half-acre parcel into five parcels ranging from .17 to .77 acres, uh, to construct two new single-family homes, each with, uh, second dwelling units on two of the newly-created parcels, uh, at 574 Pope Street in the medium-density residential zoning district. Uh, the property, it is worth noting that the property has been identified as a housing opportunity site in the housing element. Um, this is an aerial photograph of the property, uh, with Pope Street running along the, the southern frontage. Uh, Star Avenue is running, uh, kind of horizontally north to south, and it is the, um, the second parcel in from the corner of Star. Uh, Sulphur Creek is fronting the property along the rear, and, uh, Pepper Tree, I believe Pepper Tree condominiums are, um, to the, to the east side of the, of the development, or the site. Um, as identified in the staff report, uh, the property, or the project is consistent with the medium-density residential general plan requirements or, or policies, as well of the, the zoning criteria. Um, design review is required for the construction of the new homes. The use permit is requesting a reduction in the required density on parcel five, and I'll discuss that further. Um, the water neutrality, uh, for this property is actually proposed to be met through retrofitting, uh, turf, which is an alternative, uh, methodology that would also have to be approved by the city council. However, the analysis, um, provided identified that it would result in significant water savings over and above what would be consumed by the proposed residential development. And, uh, it is worth mentioning that staff has received multiple letters in support of the request, including the reduction in the density, and no comment letters in, in opposition. Uh, this is a, uh, basically a plan showing the proposed subdivision. Parcel one is to the, what would be, if you're looking at it, uh, the southeast parcel. The, the roadway is on parcel three, running down the middle. Parcel two, uh, is the northern parcel, and it runs the entire frontage of the property line with Pepper Tree. And then the two parcels proposed for development are lots four and five, and these are essentially site plans showing how the homes and second units would be developed on those properties, including, uh, the landscaping surrounding those. And then you could see Sulphur Creek identified, uh, along the, the, the left side of the, the site, or the rear of the Uh, this is a, a table that's included in the staff report that essentially identifies the development, um, basically, or I'm sorry, the, the elements of each of the parcels. So, it has the lot sizes of every one of the proposed lots, uh, the fact that parcel one and parcel two are proposed to remain undeveloped, uh, parcel three is the private road, and parcel four and five are proposed to be developed with a single-family dwelling with a second unit. Uh, the total building area for those two parcels is identified as is the, um, I'm sorry, the FAR is, is identified later, but the total building area is there. And, I will say, there's a typo in this. The, uh, minimum density range is correct. However, the maximum density is, is not correct. So, on parcel one, the maximum density would be seven units. Parcel two, the maximum density would be 14 units. Uh, parcel four, the maximum density would be four, and parcel five, the maximum density would be 12 units, not accounting for the requested, uh, density reduction. So, that was a typo on staff's part.
Could you, could you, I didn't follow that.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, essentially...
But, you have, is you, you're showing a density range.
Yeah. So, the two to five on parcel one would actually be two to seven.
Okay.
Parcel two, the four to 11 would actually be four to 14 units. Uh, parcel four, one to three is actually one to four units, and then parcel five, four to nine is actually four to 12 units. And, that, uh, it's just a typo on staff's part. The maximum density was calculated based on the maximum of 12 units per acre, and the medium density actually allows a maximum of up to 16 units per acre. And then, the, the final category there is the density, required density after environmental constraints are accounted for, should the use permit be granted, and it identifies parcel five would reduce the density to two units, um, should the commission feel, uh, support that request. Uh, and that's based on, uh, a request to reduce the density from environmental constraints. And, the next slide identifies, um, the zoning code, Section 17.40060E1, allows the, uh, planning commission to reduce required density due to environmental constraints. And, this is a graphic that was included in the packet that identifies lots four and five and portions of the other. But, uh, the color shows essentially the amount of square footage that's removed from parcel five based on the creek setback. Um, so, essentially, it's an unbillable, buildable area due to the proximity to the creek and the steepness of that slope. And, that's, that section specifically identifies that the presence of streams and steep slopes, uh, is an allowable reason to support a density reduction. Uh, and the, the submittal, or the, the justification letter submitted with the project identifies that it reduces the, uh, billable area of that parcel by 39%. And, so, this graphic is just a, a graphic representation of that. Further, the applicant, I believe, has a concept plan showing how the overall density of the two-and-a-half units could be met through future development on the remaining parcels, and I'll, I'll leave it to them to elaborate on that. Um, as identified in the staff reports, the project, staff found the project to meet the medium-density residential development criteria. This is essentially a summary of that. It identifies the 16 units per acre maximum, the lot coverage. Uh, the maximum floor area is proposed for these. Parcel four and five are 3.05 and .21. Um, building heights are, are less than the allowable. Um, there's a range there, as, basically, the code allows different setback criteria based on, um, the heights. However, this project proposes a maximum of 24 feet on one, on one parcel, parcel four, and 16 feet on parcel five. Um, setbacks are there, based on that, less than 25-foot height. Uh, and then the parking requirements are also identified. Uh, this is just the elevation of the, the residence on lot five. Identifies a variety of materials are proposed, including, uh, primarily stucco siding, but has some rock cladding, uh, metal roofing, and then, uh, a significant amount of glazing is incorporated throughout the design. This also shows some of the proposed landscaping. And then this is the, the proposed design for the second lot, uh, or I'm sorry, the second home, which is proposed on lot four. And, this also incorporates a primary home, as well as a second dwelling unit and, uh, significant garage. Similar, um, design theme, but doesn't have the rock cladding. Uh, staff finds that they are consistent and compatible with the, uh, with each other and the surrounding, uh, developments. And, so, with that, uh, the only issue that was identified through the analysis of the project is the requested density reduction. Um, as mentioned, the, the zoning code does allow the commission to grant a use permit to reduce density based on environmental constraints, and specifically identifying streams, creeks, and, um, steep slopes as justification for that. So, staff is supportive of that. And, it, the, the secondary issue would be that the formal action on the subdivision, similar to the last item, uh, is required by the city council. So, they have ultimate authority in approving the tentative map, uh, as well as the, uh, alternative methodology for meeting the water neutrality, um, requirements of the project. So, with that, it is recommended by staff that the planning commission, uh, determine that the project is exempt from SEQA, accept the required findings, and approve the use permit and design review, reducing the density and allowing the construction of the two new single-family homes, each with a second dwelling unit, and accept the required findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed subdivision of the parcel at 574 Pope Street into four new residential parcels and, uh, parcel containing a private road. With that, I'm available for any questions, should you have any. And, the applicant is here, Mr. Trincaro, uh, his architect, and, uh, his legal representation.
Any questions? Staff?
My only question would be if the, the reduction in density and what that looks like. I understand from the environmental side, on the street, on the creek-facing lots, um, but on parcels one and two, this basically applies to the whole subdivision. You're saying if you, if we subdivide, it's, you're adjusting the density across the whole parcel?
No. So, the, the, uh, reduction in density only applies to the proposed lot five.
Okay.
Uh, however, I believe the applicants have a conceptual plan showing that the overall required density of the parcel as it sits could still be accommodated on lots one and two through future development.
Okay. That was my question.
I have a general question. Uh, in the housing element, when you...
In the housing element, when you identify opportunity sites, and I believe you give a range of units that can be built on the property. Is that based on the gross area of the property?
So-
Because what you seem to be doing here is applying it lot by lot.
That's correct. So typically, with, when you look at density, you do use gross acreage, especially with a kind of a 10,000-foot level analysis of the housing element. That's correct. So gross acreage is typically considered in overall density.
So I guess I'm not following how, in this case, we're just going lot by lot.
Oh, so the analysis that was provided shows the allowable density ranges on each of the individual parcels. The overall density on the site, to do some quick math, sorry, would be 40 units total. So 2.5 acres times 16 units maximum would be a total of 40 units.
And what's proposed are-
That's the maximum.
That's what I thought.
I guess I'm not making myself clear. What is, what does the opportunity site give, a range?
Yeah, so without having it in front of me, it typically, so when you, when you propose housing opportunity sites to get your housing element approved by the state, you would say, state, we've identified these, these number of parcels that could accommodate up to this amount of residential development. And essentially, you're trying to do some accounting, as we've talked about in previous analysis, to show how you could meet the state's targeted goals for your residential development, so your RENA numbers.
So is your question, because I may have the same question, that by subdividing this and applying the reduction in density just to the lot by lot, what is our net impact? What is the net loss to, from that 40? This is bringing us to, I guess, to the quick math. Putting back the other slide, I think is better. We're basically losing, what, 10 of those structures?
And so, so to get to this, I'm sorry, the overall allowable range for development of the site as it currently sits would be 12.75, so 13 units total to 40 units total.
Your other slide, I think, shows it better.
They're showing 11.
So this has the allowable ranges for each of the individual parcels. And if you add them up individually, you do, the minimum, you lose one lot, because obviously, the road is not a buildable parcel if the property were to be subdivided. So getting back to your question about gross acreage, you would be looking at the gross acreage of the site in order to accommodate the density. But again, you would always look at it with the range, and you would always anticipate that certain infrastructure requirements would be required to develop the property.
So if we're doing our math right, we went from a range, what was the initial range? Because I know it topped out at 40, because I think we're just ultimately losing-
13.
13, yeah, so we're losing two on the downside and four on the upside from our range. So it's, we went from 13 to 40 to 11 to 36.
Well, except we don't really go to 36, because we have only two proposed on parcel five, so we've gone to 20 something. If you put the two units on-
No, because he's already got-
And the two units on five, that's four units.
Yeah.
Plus four, a maximum of 14 on parcel two and seven on parcel one, right?
Yeah.
My turn.
So that's 25.
Oh, sorry. I think, I think we're at 25, maximum.
Based on the four units proposed, plus the allowable-
Right.
-range on the remaining density. Staff did not do that analysis, but-
Okay.
Okay, I just want to be clear, because there's certain provisions in here about making changes on opportunity sites.
Through. Would the applicant like to speak?
I'm Roger Trincaro. Thank you for the opportunity to present my project. Just wanted to say that, you know, I've lived in the St. Helena area for 68 years. Went to school here. Been supportive of the community in general. Unfortunately, I've never lived in the city limits of St. Helena. I've always lived just outside. And as I'm approaching the winter years of my life, I wanted to move closer to town so that when I got to the point where I couldn't really drive anymore, I could walk to town. And, and that was the whole idea. When I saw this property for sale, I jumped on the opportunity. A good friend of mine, Abe's, gave me the opportunity to buy this piece of property, and I proceeded with this project. What I didn't know, I found out, there's a lot involved, a lot more than I thought. And I want to thank Noah and his staff for, for kind of walking us through this. And I appreciate the opportunity to build this house and, and be able to, to be a resident of St. Helena, finally. So that's, that's my spiel. Thank you.
Good evening, commission members. My name is Kevin Block. I'm an attorney in Napa. I'm here tonight representing Roger Trincaro. And I want to add my thanks to Noah and to Steve Palmer, who, who did what needed to be done to get this project in front of you. There is a lot of work. You're seeing the tip of the iceberg. This project, a lot of thought has gone into this project. And as a result, as you can see from the correspondence, it has, so far as we can tell, total support among the neighbors. I want to speak briefly to the density issue. It is true that we are requesting an exception to the minimum density requirement on parcel five, the creek parcel, for the simple reason that the creek and the creek setback causes that parcel to lose almost 40 percent of its buildable area. So the density has to be reduced on that parcel to make it work. However, the point is that we're not compromising the minimum density on the parcel as a whole. In other words, the minimum density on the 2.5 acres is 13 units. And this 2.5-acre parcel can still accommodate 13 units. And I've passed out a conceptual drawing, and I want to stress, it's purely conceptual, that we asked our architects to put together just to show one example of how 13 units could be accommodated on this parcel. So it, it's, it seems to be one of those cases where everybody can have their cake and eat it too, since the city is not sacrificing the minimum density on the 2.5-acre lot in order to accommodate the reduced density on the creek parcel. My one and only request of the commission on this project concerns condition of approval number 43, and that is the condition that requires Mr. Trincaro to build frontage improvements, not on his property, but on a neighboring, neighboring property. And setting aside the question of, you know, whether that's legal or not, it just isn't very practical to try to compel somebody to build improvements on land that he doesn't own. So the way it works in the real world is that it's actually, the city has to exercise its power of eminent domain in order to condemn that property for Mr. Trincaro to build those improvements. And if the city doesn't, doesn't initiate that eminent domain process within 120 days after the final map is recorded, that requirement for the improvements goes away. So unless you all are interested in condemning that strip of property for the segment of sidewalk, I submit to you that this condition 43 is just totally impractical. And I would like you to recommend to the city council that that condition be removed. Other than that, we have our architect here, and we're available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
I'm opening public comment, or is there any public comment? Closed public comment? Commissioner Culberstein?
You know, I'd like to start by talking about the subdivision itself, which I have a couple of comments about and a couple of concerns. We talk about the parcel that is affected by the environmental constraints. To me, it's very odd that we are creating parcel two in the configuration that we are. It's a very unusual lot configuration. That panhandle is essentially non-buildable. There seems to be no reason to do it. I don't know why the environmentally impacted parcel is just not parcel five, and that that panhandle be a part of parcel five. To me, that's a more logical layout of the property. This seems connived, for some reason. Second, I don't know why we're not putting in a complete public street. We, we've heard a lot of complaints about McQuarcoyle Avenue, and when you get to the end of it, you don't have a decent turnaround for a fire truck or an emergency vehicle. And when I go through these plans, I see that the turnaround for the fire is actually on parcel four, on the private property. And I, I can't see any reason why we would not require the public street to be put in at this, at this time. So, you know, just leaving it at the subdivision for now. Those are my comments about the subdivision.
Commissioner Sweeney?
I guess my question would be back to you, is so where would you propose, if you're asking them to put a public through street, what that looks like? Or are you talking about a cul-de-sac configuration?
A cul-de-sac, a cul-de-sac. I don't think it's wise to start projects with inferior streets, what is essentially just a driveway to parcels four and five.
May I speak to that issue, Madam Chairman? I just want to point out that Public Works has conditioned this map on a public right-of-way being built in the future. In other words, all of the prerequisites are there for there to be a full-blown city street on this property, but the feeling was that that did not need to be actually built unless and until parcels one and two were developed.
Well, I think the way to do that might be to plat it with the full public street, and perhaps only require the improvement of the driveway, which is really what we have.
Well, it is, it's, well, it is planned in the sense that the subdivision can accommodate the standard city right-of-way. So it's only, only the driveway is being actually built, but that if and when parcels one or two ever go to be developed, then they will be required to build that driveway out to a standard city street.
Who will be required?
Whoever develops parcels one and two.
Well, I don't find that a satisfactory solution. I'm just one commissioner up here, but I think that when we are plating and creating new subdivisions, we should plat them with the required street width, so that we have a public street. I think we should have the improvements. I can see some point of maybe staging some of the public improvements that are going in, but I think we need the street width, and we need the turnaround. I think for, to say that the fire department is going to come in and turn around on private property, parcel four, is just not acceptable.
Do you want to go ahead, Tracy?
No, I think it's, I think it's a valid point. I'm just listening to-
Well, I also have a, I have a problem with this project. I have a problem with the fact that this is an opportunity site in our housing element, it was used in our housing assessment element. And we can get those out if we, we want. And you're, I just cannot accept the fact that this is, this is conceptual, and yet there is a requirement to build so many units on this, this much, much land. And I, I can't approve the project because of that. Now, if you want to go back and rethink this, and find some way to do something with these, these two vacant parcels, then that's fine, but the way it stands, I can't, I can't approve the project. We go through the housing element, we go through, we go through all this work, and it appears to me now that we're going really against our, our own rules in order to accommodate a big house. I just can't, I just can't buy that one.
But Commissioner, Chairman, what are your concerns around the layout they've provided that would conceivably be used to design affordable housing? I mean, the two parcels here, where they've given a rendering-
I had the same, I had the same problems that-
No, I agree with the cul-de-sac. I agree with the street configuration. However, I believe that the layout on these two, on parcel one and parcel two, the rendering, granted, this is a future, and it's, it's just a hypothetical, but, but the layout here could accommodate something very much like we just saw with our town, St. Helena.
If you put that in, if they're put in the resolutions, that they will build that, those units in a specific time, then I have no problem with it. But I can see that sitting 60 years from now, just like it is with the big house in the back of it. And, and I really don't think that, I don't think our housing stock allows us to do things like that.
Well, Madam Chairman, I would, I would just point out that the city normally does not compel anyone to build any housing. What it does is it puts zoning on land that sets a minimum number of units. And what we're saying is that that minimum number of units can be accommodated on this parcel, even after it is subdivided, as we are proposing. The only real effect is to push the development, the more intense development, away from the sensitive creek area towards Pope Street. And I think that's very consistent with what the city wants to do in cases like this. So, so the parcel can accommodate the minimum density. And when the market deems it appropriate, someone may wish to build these units, whether in this conceptual configuration or some other configuration. And they will have to build to the minimum densities. But until that moment comes along in the housing market in St. Helena, it's, the city, it would be extraordinary for the city to say that someone must build a certain number of units on a, on a house. That's not what housing opportunity sites are about, and that's not what subdivision maps are about. Thank you.
And I support that way of thinking. Again, I do believe that Mary has brought very valid points around the street, and it's something that's specific to the subdivision map. But this purchase, this property is now owned. We can't compel this applicant to do, to build affordable housing on it. It's not, that, that is, therein lies the challenge, and I think we've discussed it at other housing element conversations, that an opportunity site in and of itself doesn't mean housing's going to get built. I think that's been the challenge in our town a long-
But that's only if we allow them to chop the thing up into these little bitty pieces. And, and that, to me, has been done on purpose in order to allow that big house back there.
But these allow future purchases of these smaller lots, which are likely to be very similar to what we just saw with our city. The city could buy this, one of these smaller lots. It may not be able to buy the lot now that it's off the market. This is, this lot is no longer available for sale. But by subdividing it, you've now created two parcels that potentially could be purchased for affordable housing. But I would not encumber them with trying to put a road in later. I think that that's something that's on the table today that can be used to make some of these future things happen, but-
And even with the street, if the street is not needed now, why would you compel a property owner to build a street that is not needed if you can compel, when the development occurs, you can compel those people to construct the street that's needed? What advantage does the city achieve?
I don't think the street has anything to do with about future. I think you're saying today, if there was a fire in one of these houses now, you'd have to turn around. I think you're addressing today.
Right, and I don't think it's good public policy to develop public streets piecemeal. When you come in for subdivision, there are certain public improvements that you're supposed to be putting in, and they're not here. And that's, that's one of my issues here. I would like to see- I would like to see the plat revised with a public street. I would like to see the irregular lot configuration of that one lot go away. Whoever, if, if this parcel, whatever it is, two, is ever sold, whoever buys that is buying a huge chunk of land that's unbuildable and absolutely worthless to them. Meanwhile, it's a beautiful viewpoint from the main house in the back. It should be part of parcel five. It shouldn't have been, it shouldn't have had this flag provision. So personally, I would be in favor of continuing the case and seeing the staff's analysis, which I have to say was very thorough, see what the new subdivision is and where we are. I mean, it's, it's frankly difficult for me to think of this as property that is ever going to be maybe anything other than this house and what's next to it.
Again, when the property is developed is not a decision that cities make. The market makes that decision. The city's role is to zone and regulate the property so that it gets what it wants.
Well, then it shouldn't be subdivided. You know, if it's going to be a big house, I mean, this is essentially a big house with three guest houses. You know, I, I'm not sure I buy into the total density reduction because I think parcel four, which is primarily a big garage with a second unit and a principal home of about 900 square feet, is this going to be sold to somebody to build that?
Well, I don't know. Mr. Trincaro can speak to that, but you're correct.
Well, I, it makes me question the number of two dwelling units that were put on parcel four. When we're, when we're viewing the entire density picture here, if parcel four is a lot that's for sale for somebody to put two units on, is that really what somebody else would do?
Well, again, the minimum density on the entire 2.5 acres is not changing at all.
But it's partly predicated on two units going onto parcel four. And what we have right now on parcel four is an oversized garage, a second dwelling unit, and a principal unit on the second floor that is about 800 square feet. It's hard for me not to see that as basically just an extension of the house on parcel five.
I don't believe that's our, I don't believe that's our place to judge that. I have no issue whatsoever with the development of parcels four and five. I agree with Mary that you've created a flag, but I also think that open, we also have focus in our town about having more viewshed and more, I forget the term, but we have filtered lots where we actually want areas that are not developed. So I, I don't have a problem at all with that. I, I do believe, though, that the, the idea of building out these streets piecemeal is a challenge, and I think that you could go a long way in solving some of that concern by re-driving this with a cul-de-sac or a turnaround at the end. But I think that, back to the opportunity sites, we can't compel anyone to build on them. We can't, as, we have owners throughout the town who have properties that are in the opportunity sites, and we can't go to any of them and compel. So I don't think we should hold Mr. Trincaro any more accountable than we're going to hold any other property owner. And I believe that we do meet the, we still have plenty of building sites or our opportunity to build density here, or enough density to accommodate our, our housing element through parcels one and parcel two. I think there's some compromise that can be made in the street, but I think it's a beautiful home. I think it's, that's been well thought out, and I think in the, we have a lot of neighborhood support, which we often cite, and we, we're not being consistent when this is a property owner that has worked closely with their neighbors and has support. I think that with the modifications that, and I, and I support them, that Mary brought up regarding the street itself and what it does to these, these homes and what Fire Engine's going to do today, regardless in the future, I think that's something that can be reviewed. But in terms of how we're judging, is this a big home? I don't think that's an issue here. I think this is a property owner can do what he wants with his property, and we can't compel him to do otherwise.
With regard to the fire, Jim Cipone has looked at this project and said that there's no problem with regard to the fire turnaround. I just wanted to make that clear.
That's very helpful information.
But I don't think we want to be using private property to turn around our emergency vehicles. I would like, my personal preference is to continue this, to have a revised drawing with the full public street with lot five in a configuration that doesn't create this unusual lot for the other parcel. And then rerun the numbers and see where we are.
Other public comment?
Well, with all due respect, the question is whether this application meets the criteria that the city has set out for subdivision maps. And your staff has told you that it does. So the question is not whether individual commissioners would divide the property differently for whatever reason or their feelings about fire turnarounds. If the fire department is satisfied and the map meets all of the criteria, I, with all due respect, I just don't think it's the role of this commission to redesign the project. The question is, does it meet the criteria? Your staff says it does. Mr. Trincaro likes it, the neighbors like it, the city isn't sacrificing anything in terms of density. Why are we redesigning this project here?
Well, I, I happen to disagree with the staff when it comes to the street here. I think it's poor public policy to put in two homes at the end of a private driveway without adequate fire turnaround. I think it's poor public policy to then say if the two lots are sold off in front, it's going to be up to those two owners to put in the street. I mean, normally, you plat a street, you build a subdivision, you put in the improvements, and then you sell your lots. That's my opinion as a planning commissioner.
The amount of improvements that Mr. Trincaro's being required to put in here is sewer, water, all suitable for full development of the property. Saving the trees in front, meandering the sidewalk around the trees. I mean, look at this list of conditions that he's being asked to satisfy in order to proceed with this project. So I think that what staff is saying is they have conditioned the project so that it meets all of these concerns. And the way it typically works is if and when somebody goes to develop further, then they will need to upgrade any of those improvements that are required by that further development. I mean, Steve Palmer and I went back and forth about this, and he insisted that it be accommodated.
I think enough is enough. I would like, I would like to call for a vote. I would like to hear for a motion, please.
I don't hear that the applicant wants to continue, so I believe that we need to vote. I can move to approve the application and to recommend to council, because really, this is a council recommendation, correct, to support the subdivision map.
Do I hear a second?
Approval on design review. I want the use permit approved for the density exception, and if their recommendation to council is no on the map, then we'll, then we'll go to council.
I don't think we have a second.
That's what I want.
Yes, I know. We do that first, and then we'll do up or down after that.
The three of them, yeah. I mean, I haven't heard any down on the other entitlements.
The applicant's representative is asking for an up or down vote on each of the entitlements. So it may be appropriate to break out each action into a separate vote, given that there are three entitlements, or two entitlements and one recommendation before the commission.
Well... So you're saying the use permit is one, the tentative subdivision is another, and the design review is the third?
That's correct, except you would be recommending on the tentative map.
Because we don't approve that. That is simply a recommendation.
So it's design review on the two residential structures, the use permit regarding the requested reduction in density, which would allow the development of lot five as proposed, and then the recommendation on the map.
Well, I can appreciate what the applicant wants, but I would like to see the revised subdivision so that we have clear understanding of what we're doing on the use permit. It's kind of fuzzy, what's happening on the use permit. I could vote on the design review, but I don't see, you know, the point of doing that. I personally would prefer to express our views about design review and continue the matter so that we could take a look at a revised plat.
Let me talk with my client.
They're going to chat and get back.
Okay.
Yeah, so the applicant is requesting up or down vote. They're not interested in redesigning, spending the resources to redesign the project.
I think, courtesy of the applicant, if they're asking for an up or down vote, we can do an up or down vote.
Well, and just, just to play out, so if, if the item was continued, but the applicant's not, not going to spend the resources to do the redesign, then the exact same item would be brought back before the commission?
All I'm looking for is something that reconfigures lot five and puts in an actual public street with the right-of-way that's required as a cul-de-sac. I don't think that that's an inordinate request.
I think the applicant hears you, but that's not something they're prepared to do or want to do, so that's why they're asking for an up or down vote. We can't deny that to this applicant who's put this much effort into it, Mary. I think that's...
Yeah, I mean, I hope you would approve the design review. I, I hope that you would also approve the use permit because the creek setback is what it is. It's not going to change. And if your recommendation to council is not to approve the subdivision map, we'll go make our case to council.
I don't, respectfully, I don't know that I can make a decision on the use permit because I don't exactly know how big lot five is if the subdivision configuration is different. I see no logical reason to divide the property the way it is divided between those two lots.
And I say again, with all due respect, that is not this commission's decision.
Well, you usually try to subdivide parcels and create usable configurations of property. And that's a long piece of this piece of property that is not usable. That's just my opinion. It's just my opinion.
If, if the commission wants to deny the use permit, then that's appealable to city council.
And I'd like to state for what Mary just said, Mary, people could use it for a garden, they could use it for a lot of things, just because we're, the up or down vote allows this, if we vote down, allows the applicant to then appeal to city council, correct?
That's correct.
So to say we're not going to vote is, it's, it makes no sense in how our processes work here in St. Helena, so...
Well, if we want more information, I think it makes sense.
We can't compel someone to bring us more information. They're ready to go.
This is not being brought too lightly. Tens of thousands of dollars and hundreds of hours have been put into the configuration that you're looking at, and much thought has been given to the 40-foot street versus the 52-foot street, cul-de-sac versus turnaround. All these issues have been examined and debated.
And our professional city, our city direct planner, our Public Works Director, I mean, people that are very vested and have the expertise that we employ here are supporting the approval of this property. So I think we should give this man an up or down vote. Or support it with the amount of effort and investment that's put into it.
Well, I can't support it the way it is.
Again, if your recommendation is to the city council not to support or approve the subdivision map, we understand that. We have to go to council anyway on the water exception. So we'll, again, we'll go up and have this subdivision map discussion with council, but I would ask you again to approve the design review, and I'd ask for approval of the use permit with, I understand your feelings, Commissioner, but I would like those two entitlements that are before you with final say to be approved, and then we go up to council on the subdivision map. That would be my preference.
I, you know, I appreciate what you're saying, and this is a complicated project, and there's no doubt a lot of time has gone into it. And the staff has worked with you to try to come up with something that seems to satisfy all of our codes. But when it comes to reducing density, I just don't feel like we have the information in front of us. And I asked for a simple adjustment that I don't think requires a lot of work, and I don't like being pushed to vote just because somebody wants to get to the council. I think we deserve to have information.
We're not reducing density.
I don't know that.
And I don't either.
I would move to continue this to the next meeting.
We'd like a vote, Tom.
I would move that we continue this to the next meeting in December with the hope that the applicant would come back and show us the revised subdivision layout that includes a full public street.
I'm, I'm not sure, Madam Chair, whether you want my input. With respect, the issue really is whether, where an applicant says that he or she is not willing to revise the project, whether you can defer your decision-making on it. Certainly, it's in your discretion to deny this project if you find it's inconsistent or you have, you have insufficient facts to make your decision. And of course, the entire project is dependent on the subdivision, so if you're not prepared to recommend approval of the subdivision, there would be ample bases for denying the other entitlements as well. I don't believe you have findings before you this evening, so in any event, the, the direction should be, in my view, that you, you act on the application. You direct staff to prepare findings for you to approve at, at your next meeting. And those findings would be, assuming you're giving the direction that is negative on the application, the findings would be, that the findings would be for a recommendation of denial on the map and, and actions of denial on the other two entitlements. But there really is no basis for requiring an applicant to delay getting a final decision from you to provide for revisions to the application that the applicant has clearly stated he's unwilling to make.
Okay.
So you're back to an up or down vote?
All right. Somebody recommend a motion?
I vote, I vote to support. I mean, an up or down is, we, I think you need to take a roll call, right?
Well, I think, could we separate it? I, I have no issues with the design review.
I thought you said you were fuzzy on that.
And then let's move, and then let's move back and maybe have that discussion around design review.
I mean, we can have more discussion, and then I assume at the next meeting, we get a revised resolution to approve.
Yeah, so whatever direction comes out of the meeting, if it is to deny, because you do not have a resolution for denial, that will be brought back for commission for formal action at the next meeting. And then staff is recommending to break your votes up on the three separate entitlements to that way allow a clear response by staff to bring the appropriate resolutions back as needed, and then also the process moving forward, whether there's a recommendation for denial on the subdivision, et cetera.
All right, there's one.
So we're voting by separate entitlement to up or down on each of the three?
Yep.
That's correct, and we need a motion.
So I, I'm, given the discussion, I'm going to start in reverse order. I'm going to move that we approve design review as submitted.
Second.
We need each of the applicant.
So you could do your roll call vote on the design review. You have a motion in a second.
Please.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Vice Chair Koberstein?
Yes.
Now, in your packet this evening, there are draft findings in support of that, and I'm assuming that this decision would be also to adopt those findings.
That's correct. That's correct.
And then staff would just, would request any recommendation for denial, review the findings that are identified in the resolution, and then identify which the commission feels they aren't able to meet, and then staff will bring that resolution back, should that be the case.
But that's just when we get to the tentative subdivision map.
To any action that's not in keeping with the current resolution.
Okay, but we just approved...
Design review.
So we don't need to do that.
That's exactly right.
You're asking us to do that tonight, to identify findings that we don't agree with? Can we...
Generally, generally, we'd be fine.
Because they're kind of... I mean, they're kind of all intermingled here. We don't have design review findings. We don't have subdivision findings. We don't have use permit findings.
So if you look, they are broken out separately, but you are correct in that they're not separate resolutions for action, but the findings required for each action are broken out separately. So if you look at C on page 124, those are the findings that are tied to the density reduction. And then D are the findings tied to the use permit, the additional findings required of a use permit.
And our design review on 116?
Design review are on page 121, and those are under B. So those are the first set of findings. So those ones are completed. And then if you go to page 124, C are findings that are required to be made of a subdivision. And letter D are findings required to be made for a use permit.
Do you want me to restate, then, my motion that we find that we're consistent with the design review?
The design review motion is fine. It's just essentially if you're having, if you're struggling with some of the specific findings required to be made in order to approve a project or reduce the density, just if you can identify which findings are concerning, then staff can bring back a resolution that implements the commission's concerns.
And of course, whatever findings you make have to be supported by substantial evidence in the record.
Mr. Black, would you mind sitting down? We've closed public content now.
All right.
Thank you.
So under C 20 and 21, are those tied to the reduction in density? And 18 and 19 are those tied to the subdivision itself?
Yes.
But again, we should be discussing the use permit at this point, and then final.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like a little time to get back to you. I can tell you generally what I disagree with as far as the standards that we're looking at here. We have a couple of weeks to work on a resolution.
We can certainly intuit, to a large extent from the review of the transcript or the tape of this evening, but it would be appropriate this evening to give us direction so that as we're going back and writing the findings for denial, that we know what your concerns are. I think we have heard, you know, as you've articulated them, some of the concerns, particularly with respect to the design of the subdivision. But I think Mr. House may be concerned about, and I think it would be helpful to hear more about the denial of the use permit as well.
Well, maybe we should vote first.
Yeah, and we haven't discussed... Yeah, let's go back to that, because what I think we've just done, the design review, we've accepted as is, so there aren't changes. So now we're moving on to use permit.
Of course, it also, the commission should bear in mind that both the use permit and the design review turn, to some extent, on the ultimate decision on the subdivision as well.
Well, maybe we should start with the subdivision. I move that we deny the subdivision proposed tentative plat as presented.
Recommend that the council deny.
Mm-hmm.
Second. Vote, please.
Vice Chair Coburnstein?
I move to deny. My vote is yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
No.
Do you want us to discuss those standards at this point?
I think it would be helpful if you would give us a little bit more information on your reasoning for the recommendation of denial on the subdivision. Again, we've, I think we've heard from all the commission members this evening about some of those concerns, and you might just articulate them in summary.
Well, I think from a general health, safety, and welfare, the idea of putting in a driveway as opposed to at least plating and constructing certain of the required public improvements is not in keeping with our plan, not in keeping necessarily with the subdivision ordinance. I find the design of the subdivision and the creation of that very unusual-shaped lot, I don't see a logical basis for doing it. I think it makes more sense for parcel five to be the parcel that is subject to the environmental constraints instead of creating this panhandle for the other lot. I don't, I haven't heard any justification for doing that, other than they can put a garden on it, but I don't know. To me, that's illogical. I think you generally try to create regularly shaped parcels when you're plating raw land. I don't, I don't agree that we should burden future buyers of parcels in this property with the construction of the public improvements. I think that is normally a subdivider's responsibility, not the responsibility of the individual lot owners.
Absolutely.
And I can't see any justification for turning around a public emergency vehicle on somebody's private front yard. I think we absolutely need to have a full street here with a cul-de-sac.
That's adequate for staff to come back with the resolution. So the final action before the commission, which is an up or down vote for the use permit, the commission will have the action, will be taking action on that.
Well, we'll talk about the standards second.
Excuse me?
I was going to talk about the standards, but we'll deal with them separately.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so this is the use permit requesting a reduction in the density.
I would move that we deny it.
I didn't hear you.
I would move that we deny the use permit to reduce the density.
Roll call.
Vice Chair Coburnstein?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
No.
I think this is another one of those cases where use permit standards that are intended to apply to uses, per se, and noise that they generate and things like that, they don't apply in this case. Half of them don't even seem to belong in here, and it's very difficult to make the findings for a use permit that we're asked to make.
That's correct. So I completely empathize with you. I would focus on condition, or I'm sorry, finding 20 and 21, as those are the additional findings required by, in order to grant a use permit to reduce density. So those are specific to a density reduction on page 124.
I see it.
I think, you know, for starters, I would like to know if, I would think that it would be pertinent to know if you were going to grant the use permit, if the city council was inclined to change the subdivision design. What does that mean as far as the density, and exactly how much of a use permit are we granting? And it's not evident, and the applicant is apparently unwilling to provide the information. So it's very hard to make the decision under those cases. You know, I also believe if the environmental takes care of part of the use permit reduction, there still is provision in our zoning code that when we're reducing density more, we have to make specific findings, I believe.
That's correct.
And I don't seem to have the basis to do that. That's that, section four, E4, "Before permitting a density reduction by use permit or general plan, ensure compliance with California Code 65863." I don't know that we can even address that. So it's a case where the applicant is putting us in a position of voting on something that I might approve in other situations, but I don't like to make votes on things when I don't feel I have the information to do it.
Well, to save you from doing that, the applicant would like to just withdraw his application entirely. So no findings are needed, and no votes are needed, and the application is no longer pending before the city.
Madam Chair, the applicant is entitled to withdraw their application at any time.
All right, so then we'll move to let him... Do we need a motion on that, Tom?
We go from demanding a vote to withdrawing.
So Tracy started out with building just the big house in the back of the property.
Yeah, I don't want to build a big house in the back. That's an opinion. That is projecting.
I don't have any trouble with a big house in the back either.
That's, I don't want to talk about that.
So Madam Chair, there has been a suggestion to continue item 6.1 until we, the commission has a full, the full commission can hear it and provide direction?
We're talking about the, he's talking about the...
The design review discussion.
Yeah. You want a motion on that?
Yes, please.
I move that we withdraw 6.1 tonight and put it on a future agenda. Roll call vote, please.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Vice Chair Coburnstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
And then moving on to the last item on the agenda, is a department report, and I just want to give an update to the public on the Hunter EIR. We are waiting on some additional information from the applicant, and so it's uncertain when that's going to be provided. And so, given that staff is not sure that the document will be posted in November or December, as was previously voiced, I just want to let the public know that. And then we are actively recruiting for our counter-technician position. I'm not sure. But just to let the public and the commission know, we're looking for a counter-technician position, but our department's down 20% of staff, one-fifth of our staff, one individual. And so we're having a little bit, it's impacting our review timeline, so just wanted to let folks know that, but we are doing our best to meet our commitments. And that's the entire department report for tonight.
Can you let us, what's the current status on bringing back the EIR for the general plan?
So I have, I have gotten through about half of it myself, so we brought that document in-house when the consultants were no longer working on it. Unfortunately, I had a number of projects, this being one of them, in my queue that I needed to be able to move forward through before I could focus my, as much of my attention as I can on that. So having this project done, and some of the ones that we previously were acted on, I believe I'll be able to now be able to spend some significant amounts of time on it. There's some challenges with the document in that it was decided about, very late in the process, that the general plan itself should be a self-mitigating general plan, meaning your general plan policies get plugged in into your EIR as mitigation measures. However, the actions taken to do that were not comprehensive. Essentially, they don't address all areas of environmental, potential environmental impacts for the plan that anticipates build-out in the city for 30 years. And so essentially, I have been reviewing the EIR in consultation with general plan policies, and I do anticipate the need to bring back additional policies that the commission would have to review before we go on to the council and provide direction on their acceptance, because they will need to serve as mitigation measures for the environmental impacts. We will definitely have to go out for another 45-day public review and comment period because the changes we're anticipating are significant enough that that will definitely occur. But it is my number-one priority, and I know I've said that to this commission several times. However, you know, as soon as I feel like I start to get some traction, something like a staff change happens or those types of things. But I do feel that we are being able to spend some time on it, and I'm hoping through the holidays, we have a little bit of a slowdown, so I can dedicate some significant amount of resources to get through those larger documents.